Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 3rd. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Jim Baller.
Let's pray. Lord, as we reflect during this season of Thanksgiving, we're so very fortunate for so many things. Father, often we hear media reports that describe our communities, our states, our nation, and even throughout the world, just how bad things are and how bad things can be. But we're so very thankful that you're in control, that there's much good that does go unreported, that there are many positive activities that go unnoticed, and that the basic good of humanity is still positive and uplifting as relevant in our community. As we reflect on our own city, we're thankful for the countless volunteers and leaders that worked diligently to leave a lasting mark of improvement on Burlington and Alamance County. And we pray tonight, Father, that you give us continued strength and purpose to focus on the needs that are before us, seeking solutions that are both fiscally responsible and impactful to solve issues and create better quality of life for everyone. Thank you, Father, for these things, in your name we pray. Amen.
This time, we recognize our interim City Clerk, Beverly Smith.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
At this time, I will confirm the abstracted votes of the municipal elections held on November 5th, 2019, as certified by the Alamance County Board of Elections and the Guilford County Board of Elections. Votes for Mayor Ian Baltudis: 2,387. Joey Cook Sr.: 1,191. Write-in votes: 12. Votes for councilmembers: Bob Ward: 2,780. Kathy Hikes: 2,739. Write-in votes: 143. Let it be confirmed that Ian Baltudis is the duly-elected mayor for a two-year term expiring in December 2021. Bob Ward and Kathy Hikes are the duly-elected councilmembers for four-year terms expiring in December 2023. At this time, I'll ask Mayor Baltudis and councilmembers Kathy Hikes and Bob Ward to come forward to receive your oath of office. All right. We can spread out, too, but they're first come. Let's see what we look like. All right, Kathy, I'll have you come a little bit closer to me. Right back here. I want to stand right behind you, so you really won't. Okay. First, let me tell you, it is a high honor to administer your oath of office. I thank you for this privilege, and I thank you for your service. Okay, you ready?
Ready, will.
I will. Yes, sir. I state your name.
I think I will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Sowmely swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities
And authorities.
Which are
Which are
Or may be established
Or may be established.
For the government thereof
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor
And that I will endeavor
To support
To support.
Maintain and defend
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the said state
The Constitution of the said state.
Not inconsistent with
Not inconsistent with
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will
And that I will
Well and truly execute
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of mayor pro temp
The duties of the office of mayor pro temp.
For the city of Burlington
For the city of Burlington.
According to the best of my skill and ability
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the law
According to the law.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Next on our agenda, we have a recognition this evening. At this time, I'll call on Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to take a moment to recognize and celebrate one of our own Recreation and Parks Director, Tony Laws. If you'd like to join us at the podium, Tony, that'd be fantastic. I'd also like to recognize that his wife, Patsy, and son, Lee, are with us. Tony recently received a national honor. He was inducted into the National Softball Hall of Fame in Sparks, Nevada, on November 9th. He was joined by his wife and children, as you can see. He was involved in a class of eight inductees, including an Olympian, Jessica Mendoza. I thought that was pretty awesome. And Tony's a really big deal in this universe. He's looked up to greatly. He was a team leader for three international world championship teams for the United States for softball, one women's team, a junior women's, and a men's national team. This is his class of eight inductees. So he joins a really elite group of over 400? Does that sound about right?
420.
420 now. Members of the National Softball Hall of Fame, which is located in Oklahoma City. So he was recognized and saluted for his meritorious service for growing softball in Burlington, specifically senior softball. We get to host the National Softball Tournament every year. So it was a really big treat to see Burlington on this national stage and Tony representing us so well. So we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize and celebrate you, and I'm sure you might want to say a few words as well.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. I'll say a few words. Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. I appreciate that introduction, and I want to thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers for recognizing me tonight, and I want to thank you for all the years that I've been able to serve with the Softball Association, over 50 years, all volunteer, by the way, not paid for my softball work, but it has been a direct benefit to Burlington, too, because we've hosted numerous national tournaments since we got involved. Our first one was 1979, as Harold will remember, and we've had at least one a year, sometimes multiple years, for most of the year since, so over 40 at this time, national tournaments have been here, and that certainly has had a big economic impact on our city, and we appreciate that, and also given a lot of entertainment to people that love softball in this town. And it was a very softball-loving community, especially when all the mills were in operation, and most of those mills sponsored at least one team, some of them multiple teams, and it was a big game in the area. But I feel very humbled and honored to receive this honor, and very proud, and certainly very proud of my personal recognition, but also the city abroad. We're known in the softball community nationally, and we're very well-respected, and a lot of that goes to the backing we've had from the city councils over the years, including this one, and my former boss, Mr. Owen, who worked with me a long time in this endeavor, and now my boss, Ms. Kelly. So we're very happy to have been able to do this and to get this honor, certainly not in my plan. I don't want anybody to think I was a great player. I was an average player at best. I did play softball, but not like the other members of the playing category in the Softball Hall of Fame. But anyway, thank you very much for the support over the years, and I hope that we can continue. We have national tournaments coming in this summer, 2020, and we have one already awarded for 2021, and hopefully we'll continue that on down the road. They awarded them two years in advance, so 2021's as far as we can go right now, but next year, we'll hope to get another one for 2022. So thank you very much, and thanks to my wife, Patsy, and son, Lee, for being here. My other son and his wife couldn't be here, but I've had a lot of support from them over the years, too, and they've probably seen a softball game or two more than they wanted to see. But I started dragging Lee around when he was just a kid to the softball fields, and of course, Patsy had to come, too, for many of those events. But anyway, thank you very much, and I'm certainly honored to be a good representative of Burlington locally and nationally.
Thank you, Tony. Congratulations. Next on our agenda, we have a report to council regarding the Carousel House design and the presentation from Clearscapes. This time, we'll again recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Yes, thank you. As council will recall, the city awarded a contract to architectural firm Clearscapes back in June to perform the public input mini-master plan for the amusement area, and most importantly, the design of the Carousel House for our refurbished animals that will be returning in 2021. We've worked diligently on that process from public input, which began almost as soon as the contract was initiated in June, through extensive staff input, stakeholder feedback to get us to where we are today, which is to present the schematic design of the Carousel House. For that, I'll introduce Ms. Maung Ten Yu. She's with Clearscapes, and she will walk you through our presentation, and she or I are certainly happy to take questions. We also have Brandon Holt, who's the Capital Projects Manager here, who can help us well. Turn it up.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We have made tremendous progress on this project, so I'll afford to give you an update. I just pushed. As Kelly had stated, we started the project in June, starting with a community engagement process. We're closely with staff members to create image boards and create questionnaires, online questionnaires, to get public input on the important issues that we need to consider while we're designing improvement to the amusement area, as well as design of the new Carousel House. We had tremendous response to the online surveys. We also had focus groups, meeting with staff, city councilmembers, parks and recreation commissioners, and also representatives of the YMCA, since it's such a close neighbor to the park. These are images. As you can see, tremendous response from the public at two public events. This is a result of a question on the questionnaire. Actually, it's a series of six questions about the design of the new Carousel House. And with the six questions, we asked respondents to rank each of these things in order of priority. And the blue is priority number one, being the highest priority, and the gray is priority number six, being the lowest priority in relation to these six items. And for example, the first question was having the Carousel House provide an area for sitting and for viewing. Nineteen of the respondents ranked this as the number-one priority for the Carousel House. And so as you can see, the other responses are pretty evenly distributed. The second question is having the Carousel located inside an air-conditioned enclosed building. I was quite surprised with this response, actually. So only 9% of the respondents say this is a number-one priority, and majority of the responses are really ranking that as priority number six, being the last priority. The next question, exterior walls that open up, is related to the air conditioning question, whether the Carousel House should have walls that can open up to the outdoor environment, so essentially acting more like an open pavilion. And not surprisingly, if you take the priority one, two, and three together, you know, more than half of the respondents say that this is a top priority. So this is consistent with the second question, where they said, you know, it really doesn't need to be an enclosed, air-conditioned building. The year-round operation, there was quite a number of people who ranked this as the number-one priority. So I think there is a community desire for the Carousel House to have extended seasonal hours more than what it has been in the past, you know, lighting, natural lighting to the space. And also, the last one, it was also ranked pretty high, is visibility of the Carousel, even when the facility is closed. And so in summary, you know, for the new Carousel House, the criteria we used was to design a facility with a lot of glass around the perimeter wall, so that you can see the Carousel, even when it's closed, and you can see it in the evening, having doors that open up into the outside environment. Because the building will not be conditioned, it will have natural ventilation in the summer, and semi-conditioned in the winter. Again, this is in response to the desire to have more of a year-round operation, so this would help extend the operational, you know, season of the Carousel. We do have an event space connected to the Carousel that will be fully conditioned, air-conditioning and heating, so that, you know, encourages year-round use. The event space will accommodate more than 100 people. And two criteria related to the location of the Carousel is visibility from Church Street. So we wanted this Carousel, this important building in the park, to be visible from Church Street and from Main Street. And the other criteria was to locate the Carousel House outside of the floodplain. Currently, the Carousel House is located inside within the 100-year floodplain. So this diagram kind of shows the floodplain. The green area is the 100-year floodplain, and the yellow area is the 500-year floodplain. And this circle right here is the blue, it's the boat ride pavilion, just as
Airplane ride, yeah.
Airplane ride pavilion, and then the YMCA, I lost my, okay, there we go. So the YMCA is here. So this area right here is kind of the, really, the only area that we can put, you know, the Carousel House based on the criteria that we have. This is aerial image that's easier to see. Again, you know, this area is in between, adjacent to the Y and near the entry into the park, so that is the area. Looking at the site image of that site that we're talking about, so this essentially is the location where the new Carousel House will be located. And as you can see where the parking is, the parking is at a higher elevation than the park. You can see how the ground slopes down. So at the parking level, it's about five and a half, six feet above where the park level is, where you see that shelter. And we're going to be locating Carousel House on the high elevation for a couple of reasons, so that we can have ADA accessibility from the parking into, directly into, the Carousel House. And secondly, at the higher elevation, it has better visibility from the street. So this is, again, showing the location of the Carousel House on the site. We are modifying the entry point from the street coming in, and these blue elements, you know, this is an airplane ride, this is existing shelter with the restrooms and the gym. The YMCA is here. One other critical, you know, kind of priority was to maintain as much of the existing site elements and infrastructure as possible, and limiting kind of the area of disturbance for the new Carousel House to less than one acre. So with the rendered site plan, I'll walk through the pedestrian access. So we are creating enhanced entry area. Right now, there's a pretty narrow entry, so we're gonna enlarge that area, and you've got coming in a drop-off area right in front of it, and from the drop-off area, you have complete accessibility directly into the Carousel House. There is, because the Carousel House is on a higher elevation than the park, there are a few steps to get down into the parking, into the park area, but if you are, need handicap accessible entry, you know, from the ADA parking spaces, you would have access to the sidewalk that you walk directly into the Carousel House, or there's a ramp coming down to the park proper. And from this side, from the parking on the Y side, again, there is ADA accessibility down into the Carousel, as well as down into the park. So this is looking at some of the plant elements. We've got a row of hedges and some trees to provide a buffer between the drive aisle and the Carousel House. And the other thing I forgot to point out is that we are proposing a connection between the two parking areas, from the parking lot and the YMCA parking lot. So we've got planters with trees and plants, shrubs. We have, on this end, because there is a bit of a gray change from the plaza area down to where the existing shelter is, we've got a terrace landscaped area to kind of transition down, and of course, enhance, you know, kind of landscaping and with plants and trees. These are some of the hardscape materials that we are considering. We've got brick pavers for the plaza area and for the, you know, kind of the entry area, kind of pavement markers with brick paving. Could incorporate sculptural elements in the park. We'll have landscape lighting to provide lighting around the Carousel House. We could have, you know, outdoor furniture on the plaza. This is an example of terrace landscape area, and possibility of a mural or some kind of artistic, you know, art piece on the wall. We could consider that. The landscape elements, these are just some examples of landscape, plants that we may consider, some kind of hedge, and trees for the separation of the vehicular and the pedestrian areas, trees that are smaller in scale and also more vertical, instead of having a wide canopy, so that you have better visibility through the trees into the Carousel House. Again, some vines for the walls and grasses and trees. Looking at the floor plan, we, so the Carousel House is about 4,000 square feet with the Carousel locating in the center. With this size, there is generous circulation space around it. There's also some seating areas around the perimeter. You see that we're showing doors that can fold open, so that there is opening all around the Carousel to connect to the outdoor environment. We have, you know, there's easy access to the outdoor plaza spaces, steps that provide, you know, again, easy access back into the park proper. With the event space building, we've got three restrooms, three restrooms that serve the Carousel and the event space, and we have an event space that's about 1,200 square feet. It could function as one large event space or two smaller event spaces. For this size, if we have a banquet-type event, we could accommodate maybe 80 to 85 people. If it's more of a conference meeting event with chairs, we could accommodate about 180 These are some visual images just to show what the building would look and feel like. So this is a Carousel House in Memphis, Tennessee, but as you can see, the walls are all glazing to provide a lot of visibility and connection to the outdoors, and that's what we're proposing. The interior of the Carousel, we're going to be using laminated wood structure, beams and planks with a clear finish, so you see the warmth of the wood structure. This is an example of doors that can open up and stack against each other. This is an example of what the event space could look like, essentially with exposed structure, exposed ceiling, and duckwork. It's just a very kind of simple space with glazing, you know, connection to the outdoor plaza space. This is a section cutting through the Carousel. Again, we are proposing masonry columns here with exposed wood structure, and this is the event space right there. This is a daytime view, you know, kind of schematic rendering. Now, we're at the end of the schematic design phase, so this is possibly what it would look like. It needs a little bit more development, but a daytime view, looking from the entry, you're looking at kind of the drop-off area right there and the building beyond. An evening view of the Carousel House. So with it lit on inside, you'll be able to see it as a beacon, you know, from the street, and it'll be a prominent building within the park environment. This is a view from within the park, so you can see the series of steps going up into the Carousel House. For a project of this scale and for the level of quality that we're thinking of based on all the criterias that we have received from the community, from all the stakeholders, we estimate this project budget or project cost to be around $3,000, $3,500 to $4,000 million. Okay. Thank you very much. And I'm certainly honored to be a good representative of Burlington locally and nationally.
Thank you, Tony. Congratulations. Next on our agenda, we have a report to council regarding the Carousel House design and the presentation from Clearscapes. This time, we'll again recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Yes, thank you. As council will recall, the city awarded a contract to architectural firm Clearscapes back in June to perform the public input mini-master plan for the amusement area, and most importantly, the design of the Carousel House for our refurbished animals that will be returning in 2021. We've worked diligently on that process from public input, which began almost as soon as the contract was initiated in June, through extensive staff input, stakeholder feedback to get us to where we are today, which is to present the schematic design of the Carousel House. For that, I'll introduce Ms. Maung Ten Yu. She's with Clearscapes, and she will walk you through our presentation, and she or I are certainly happy to take questions. We also have Brandon Holt, who's the Capital Projects Manager here, who can help us well. Turn it up.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We have made tremendous progress on this project, so I'll afford to give you an update. I just pushed. As Kelly had stated, we started the project in June, starting with a community engagement process. We're closing closely with staff members to create image boards and create questionnaires, online questionnaires, to get public input on the important issues that we need to consider while we're designing improvement to the amusement area, as well as design of the new Carousel House. We had tremendous response to the online surveys. We also had focus groups, meeting with staff, city councilmembers, parks and recreation commissioners, and also representatives of the YMCA, since it's such a close neighbor to the park. These are images. As you can see, tremendous response from the public at two public events. This is a result of a question on the questionnaire. Actually, it's a series of six questions about the design of the new Carousel House. And with the six questions, we asked respondents to rank each of these things in order of priority. And the blue is priority number one, being the highest priority, and the gray is priority number six, being the lowest priority in relation to these six items. And for example, the first question was having the Carousel House provide an area for sitting and for viewing. Nineteen of the respondents ranked this as the number-one priority for the Carousel House. And so as you can see, the other responses are pretty evenly distributed. The second question is having the Carousel located inside an air-conditioned enclosed building. I was quite surprised with this response, actually. So only 9% of the respondents say this is a number-one priority, and majority of the responses are really ranking that as priority number six, being the last priority. The next question, exterior walls that open up, is related to the air conditioning question, whether the Carousel House should have walls that can open up to the outdoor environment, so essentially acting more like an open pavilion. And not surprisingly, if you take the priority one, two, and three together, you know, more than half of the respondents say that this is a top priority. So this is consistent with the second question, where they said, you know, it really doesn't need to be an enclosed, air-conditioned building. The year-round operation, there was quite a number of people who ranked this as the number-one priority. So I think there is a community desire for the Carousel House to have extended seasonal hours more than what it has been in the past, you know, lighting, natural lighting to the space. And also, the last one, it was also ranked pretty high, is visibility of the Carousel, even when the facility is closed. And so in summary, you know, for the new Carousel House, the criteria we used was to design a facility with a lot of glass around the perimeter wall, so that you can see the Carousel, even when it's closed, and you can see it in the evening, having doors that open up into the outside environment. Because the building will not be conditioned, it will have natural ventilation in the summer, and semi-conditioned in the winter. Again, this is in response to the desire to have more of a year-round operation, so this would help extend the operational, you know, season of the Carousel. We do have an event space connected to the Carousel that will be fully conditioned, air-conditioning and heating, so that, you know, encourages year-round use. The event space will accommodate more than 100 people. And two criteria related to the location of the Carousel is visibility from Church Street. So we wanted this Carousel, this important building in the park, to be visible from Church Street and from Main Street. And the other criteria was to locate the Carousel House outside of the floodplain. Currently, the Carousel House is located inside within the 100-year floodplain. So this diagram kind of shows the floodplain. The green area is the 100-year floodplain, and the yellow area is the 500-year floodplain. And this circle right here is the blue, it's the boat ride pavilion, just as
Airplane ride, yeah.
Airplane ride pavilion, and then the YMCA, I lost my, okay, there we go. So the YMCA is here. So this area right here is kind of the, really, the only area that we can put, you know, the Carousel House based on the criterias that we have. This is aerial image that's easier to see. Again, you know, this area is in between, adjacent to the Y and near the entry into the park, so that is the area. Looking at the site image of that site that we're talking about, so this essentially is the location where the new Carousel House will be located. And as you can see where the parking is, the parking is at a higher elevation than the park. You can see how the ground slopes down. So at the parking level, it's about five and a half, six feet above where the park level is, where you see that shelter. And we're going to be locating Carousel House on the high elevation for a couple of reasons, so that we can have ADA accessibility from the parking into, directly into, the Carousel House. And secondly, at the higher elevation, it has better visibility from the street. So this is, again, showing the location of the Carousel House on the site. We are modifying the entry point from the street coming in, and these blue elements, you know, this is an airplane ride, this is existing shelter with the restrooms and the gym. The YMCA is here. One other critical, you know, kind of priority was to maintain as much of the existing site elements and infrastructure as possible, and limiting kind of the area of disturbance for the new Carousel House to less than one acre. So with the rendered site plan, I'll walk through the pedestrian access. So we are creating enhanced entry area. Right now, there's a pretty narrow entry, so we're gonna enlarge that area, and you've got coming in a drop-off area right in front of it, and from the drop-off area, you have complete accessibility directly into the Carousel House. There is, because the Carousel House is on a higher elevation than the park, there are a few steps to get down into the parking, into the park area, but if you are, need handicap accessible entry, you know, from the ADA parking spaces, you would have access to the sidewalk that you walk directly into the Carousel House, or there's a ramp coming down to the park proper. And from this side, from the parking on the Y side, again, there is ADA accessibility down into the Carousel, as well as down into the park. So this is looking at some of the plant elements. We've got a row of hedges and some trees to provide a buffer between the drive aisle and the Carousel House. And the other thing I forgot to point out is that we are proposing a connection between the two parking areas, from the parking lot and the YMCA parking lot. So we've got planters with trees and plants, shrubs. We have, on this end, because there is a bit of a gray change from the plaza area down to where the existing shelter is, we've got a terrace landscaped area to kind of transition down, and of course, enhance, you know, kind of landscaping and with plants and trees. These are some of the hardscape materials that we are considering. We've got brick pavers for the plaza area and for the, you know, kind of the entry area, kind of pavement markers with brick paving. We could incorporate sculptural elements in the park. We'll have landscape lighting to provide lighting around the Carousel House. We could have, you know, outdoor furniture on the plaza. This is an example of terrace landscaped area, and possibility of a mural or some kind of artistic, you know, art piece on the wall. We could consider that. The landscape elements, these are just some examples of landscape, plants that we may consider, some kind of hedge, and trees for the separation of the vehicular and the pedestrian areas, trees that are smaller in scale and also more vertical, instead of having a wide canopy, so that you have better visibility through the trees into the Carousel House. Again, some vines for the walls and grasses and trees.
These are some visual images just to show what the building would look and feel like. So this is Carousel House in Memphis, Tennessee. But as you can see, the walls are all glazing to provide a lot of visibility and connection to the outdoors, and that's what we're proposing. The interior of the Carousel, we're gonna be using laminated wood structure, beams and planks with a clear finish, so you see the warmth of the, of the wood structure. This is an example of doors that can open up and stack against each other. This is an example of what the event space could look like, essentially with exposed structure, exposed ceiling and duck work. It's just a very kind of simple space with glazing, you know, connection to the outdoor plaza space. This is a section cutting through the Carousel. Again, we are proposing masonry columns here with exposed wood structure, and this is the event space right there. This is a daytime view, you know, kind of schematic rendering. Now we're at the end of the schematic design phase, so this is possibly what it would look like. It needs a little bit more development, but a daytime view, looking from the entry, you're looking at kind of the drop-off area right there and, and the building beyond. An evening view of the Carousel House. So with it lit on inside, you'll be able to see it as a beacon, you know, from, from the street, and it'll be a prominent building within the park environment. This is a view from within the park, so you can see the series of steps going up into the Carousel House. For a project of this scale and for the level of quality that, that we're thinking of based on all the criterias that we have received from the community, from all the stakeholders, we estimate this project budget or project cost to be around three, three and a half to four million dollars to provide, you know, really the high-quality level of a facility that, that you would want for the Carousel House. Next steps. So we are going into the design development and construction document phases, essentially really looking at details, selecting materials, you know, really fine-tuning the drawings for it to be able to go out to bid. So we're looking at, you know, starting now through the end of winter in 2020. And then there'll be a period where it's gonna have to be reviewed by the regulatory, you know, plan reviewers and all the site regulatory reviews in the early spring. Bidding, we're thinking sometime in the spring of 2020. And then hopefully award this project in the summer of 2020 and then construction going through the late spring of 2021.
Thank you.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
If you go back to the slide, that slide. Help me with the accessibility from this area to the, actually to the Carousel itself. Because predominantly you have a ton of young people and older people basically coming in the Carousel from this direction or going out to this direction because of the remaining part of the park.
Right.
So is there a, a way or how are they gonna have to navigate these steps?
Yeah. And let me go back to the site plan. Here. So if you're, if you're in here at this kind of gathering plaza, there's an existing path that will, with connecting to a ramp, that would provide you with ADA accessibility back into the Carousel House. Or you could go to the right, you know, past the existing shelter and again, a sloped ramp coming up here and into the Carousel House. So this, you know, it's, having the number of steps is not, if we were to design this facility from scratch, we would not introduce the number of steps that we have. But working from the existing condition, trying to connect two points essentially, it, it requires the steps to navigate the tight difference between where the parking level is and where the existing park is. And we're trying to maintain as much of existing park infrastructure as possible, so that's why we're not making changes that could help mitigate that. In the future, in the future phases, if we are to be able to provide more improvements to the park area, we could consider grading, regrading the park to provide, you know, easier access.
But as you're saying, that would require more drastic modifications to the plaza promenade-
That's right.
-as well as the existing shelter structure-
That's right. That's right. That's right. Yep.
Other questions from council?
So there would be, I guess, I'm trying to understand here, when you, if you looked to the right and went up that ramp-
Uh huh.
-there would be access then to the Carousel?
Yes.
Right, that's an access point there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so all of that is access directly into the Carousel House. Yep. I also, I forgot to mention that, you know, with this event space, we do have a catering staging area to serve food-related events. And there is also direct access, you know, to the store from that space to the parking.
The parking area itself, in terms of, you know, due to my entire tenure, the Y parking and the city parking has always been shared. But if you, based on the present layout here, my question is, is you've got a drop-off here, but let's just say the majority of the quote-unquote park parking, if the Y is in operation, will have to be down back, down South Church Street, back here.
Right.
Okay. So access for those people will be at the drop-off area here?
Will be drop-off area-
Walking access?
Here, and also the existing, currently the main entry, you know, the ADA entry is further down in the parking lot.
That's not shown here, right?
It's not shown here, right. It's beyond this image, yes. So all of that remains. We're not making any changes to that access.
Does the parking lot here, as it's shown in this design, does that eliminate any places that's in the Y parking lot now?
I think we are losing a few spaces from the Y parking lot.
There's a couple and they gained a couple.
Couple. Yeah, exactly.
But I want to say they might have been on the positive side by a couple of these.
Right, yes. It was not a drastic change, despite the number of parking spaces.
And the access to the event center, if not going through the Carousel, would be at the eighty, top area here?
Um, let me, here. So, so this is a kind of entry into the carousel, into the event space, into the event building. So from the parking, this is entry into kind of a circulation space, a vestibule, and from here, you can go into the event space. Or you can go into the event space from the Carousel House as well, so there's access from there. And from the event space, there's a direct connection and access to the event plaza. So when you have an event in that space, you could spill out into the plaza space. And on the plaza space, because it is on higher ground, you would have great view of the park.
Now, one of the big considerations that we asked for was queuing availability during big festivals and events. Can you walk us through any design considerations that were incorporated to allow for the line queue that can be quite extensive?
Right. So, you know, we provided circulation all the way around this facility, and so the queuing really could be around the entire perimeter. There is also, you know, the path, walking path here coming up, depending on which direction people are coming from. I would say you would want the queue to start, you know, somewhere here and then around the facility.
So within the structure itself?
Yes, yes.
Other questions from council?
One of the things, Mayor, on that, the queuing, the Carousel word is and the train word is, the lines won't be bumping up each, against each other. So that, that's-
Yep, that would, that helps. Right.
Now, the figure you mentioned, the 3.5 million, that does not take into consideration the other work needs to be done in the park, does it, or does it not?
It does not include the many master plan elements, just the site plan that Montana has shown you tonight, but it does include the entire project costs, not just the construction costs. So it's all the site work necessary, the actual construction, parking lot work, all-inclusive there with contingency built in and whatnot because we're so early in this phase. As we tighten that up, I think we'll definitely have a more appropriate number to give you, but right now that is taking in the whole project consideration.
And the timeline as far as completion, you've lined that up with when the Carousel should be ready. How confident are you in the ability to meet that timeline? Obviously, we're early on.
Right. We're close to that.
So Tony, since you're the one who had good complaints about this, in terms of the, how this is all coordinated in reference to construction, I read my point is this, this is a major part of it, but the concept of the whole park is still the overriding factor that has to be looked at because that's, that's where your activity or your flow of traffic will come. This, this area to the left here is the concept that we were right, as you go down into the area itself. So my, my point is then that technically, what we're showing here and the 3.5 million is, the house is a brick paving, is it a terrace, all that, right?
It's everything she's got brightened up here.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's sort of the phase one of-
But the area coming down, the walkway coming down to the middle of the park is not in part of that.
Not yet, just this sentence.
If there are no other questions, then we'll conclude this report to council and continue with the agenda. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
And obviously, if anyone's got fellow questions afterward, we're happy to-
And there will be further reports as we get along that timeline, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we'll recognize our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith, again.
This is a council, this is my city, so remind you, we're reading the rules of conflicts of interest. I ask that there are any potential conflicts and tonight, there's the items.
We have one addition to the consent agenda. It is item F, the resolution to abandon public water line at 3010 South Church Street. Do I hear a motion to approve that addition to the consent agenda? Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Item F has been added to consent agenda. And next is the adoption of our agenda before council is the agenda, including the addition. Do I hear a motion to adopt that agenda?
Make a motion, we adopt the agendas with the addition.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A, to approve the 2019 North Carolina Fireman's Association Annual Roster Certification pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 508625. Item B, to approve Burlington Graham Metropolitan Planning and Organization Blanket Agreement for reimbursement of allowable expenses for transportation studies approved by the Transportation Advisory Board. Item C, to approve a proposed 2020 City Council and Work Session Regular Meeting Schedule. Item D, to approve Budget Amendment 2020-15 to allow the Community Development Division to reallocation of Community Development Block Grant Funds. Item E, to approve Budget Amendment 2020-16 to allow the Burlington Police Department to use Melvin Hall fund donations. And item F, as added to adopt a resolution to permanently abandon a portion of public water line and the associated permanent easement across Alamance County PID 113301, GPIN 8854486099, also, and known as 3010 South Church Street. Do I hear a motion to approve those consent agenda items? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, motion is passed. Consent agenda items have been approved.
I just want to ask one question.
Sure.
Who was Melvin Hall? What's his story?
I don't know. That fund's been in place for a really long time. It was part of a will that when he passed, he passed it down to one of his heirs and ordered that that money be sent to the Burlington Police Department, put in the bid views each year. But I don't know the background story on who he actually was.
I'd like to know what, what made that such an important item to him. Thank you.
Thanks. This evening, we have a number of public hearings scheduled. Public hearing number one, a public hearing has been set to receive citizen comments and consider approving amendments to the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and fiscal year 2019, 2020, Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CDBG Annual Action Plan. So this time, we recognize Community Development Administrator, Sonia Brandl.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. The Planning and Community Development Department asks that City Council approve the amendments to the 1819 and 1920 CDBG Annual Action Plans. Specifically, in the 1819 Annual Action Plan, council allocated $95,642 to the city park restrooms. And we also, in 1920 CDBG Annual Action Plan, we allocated $110,330 to Phase 2B of the North Park Development. And so what we are requesting is that that $110,330 be reallocated to rehab the city park restrooms, and that would bring the city park restrooms budget up to $205,972. And so as required by HUD, we do have to have a public hearing to amend our annual action plan.
Questions from council? Were those items specifically designated to any of the phase project at North Park?
The, the $110,330 was for Phase 2B.
Okay. But they weren't tagged to any of the specific elements of, of that phase?
I am not sure what Phase 2B was.
Phase 2B are trails on the east side of the creek-
Okay.
-on the makeup bigger side. There were three different trails that were identified.
Okay.
Phase 2B. Phase 2A is before.
Okay. All right. Do we have additional funding mechanism that we plan to use in that, or?
I think what we would probably do is include Phase 2B with additional requests for consideration with CDBG in the future. Be with other projects that will be proposed for those funds.
Any other questions from council before we begin the public hearing? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak, if anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. And do I hear a motion to approve the amendments to the CDBG Annual Action Plans?
Make a motion, we approve the amendment to the CDBG Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 1819 and fiscal year 1920.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
Our second public hearing this evening has been set to consider an application to rezone from O and I Office and Institutional District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of a unified business development. The property is located at 3725 South Church Street, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 107007. This time, we recognize interim Director of Planning and Community Development, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before I get started with this, I just want to orient you and the audience to where we're at again. We're on Church Street here, as you can see. The site is outlined in red and Westbrook Avenue running this way towards Gibsonville. The current food line, Westbrook Shopping Center sits at this location. And this is the zoning map, the location we saw in the area that's here in red. The request is to rezone from Office and Institutional District to Conditional Business District for the use of a unified business development. The property is located within a commercial corridor along South Church Street, and the proposed use of the property makes the development compatible with the uses already in the area. The development incorporates requirements identified in the Greenways and Bike Ways Plan. The applicant is providing a multi-use path along Westbrook Avenue frontage. This will combine with the frontage on Church Street that the NCDOT will install, a multi-use path in their funded project that's already scheduled for late 2020. So you'll have a continuous multi-use path around this site, both on Church Street and up Westbrook. This proposed development was submitted before November 1, 2019, so therefore it is not subject to the Unified Development Ordinance that was recently adopted and enacted in November, although the developer is adding additional landscaping and fencing to screen the adjacent residential properties and has also agreed to meet commercial design and sign standards of the UDO. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan calls for a traditional residential for the area, although that is not, this is not consistent with the comp plan what's being proposed. The property is, again, contiguous to a commercial corridor, and the applicant has conducted a neighborhood meeting and did not receive any response to that. Staff recommends approval of this request, as well as the planning zoning commission at the November 25th meeting was a unanimous recommendation to you to approve as well. Mr. Chad Huffine is here to provide additional details, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Chad, would you like to say anything?
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting us present to you tonight. It's, it's good to finally be here. We started last November, and we spent about a year with staff and the developer and the property owner. We're excited. I think this is a, I guess, to piggyback on Mike's introduction, this completes the intersection, development of the intersection at Westbrook and Church Street. It kind of closes that node of commercial and general business and then provides a transition that the long-range development plan asks for and charges us with as we move forward. So I think Mike did a good job of introducing the project. I'd like to bring to you two concerns that the planning board had and the resolutions that we have. I think they appeared in your staff report. So Chairman Parker asked us how we were gonna handle bike traffic, and I frankly didn't have an answer for him. We'd not thought about that part of the transportation makeup. So we went back through the Unified Development Ordinance, the new work that Chad has done, and we found places to place bicycle accommodations that are consistent with the UDO and their requirements for bike spaces. So the second question was from Mr. Black, who was the, I guess, assistant chairman. He asked us about fire- He asked us about fire protection for the restaurant in the intersection closest to Westbrook and Church Street. And that's a building inspections specific item. When that set of building plans comes to staff for review, they'll review and require any of the fire protection associated with that endeavor specific to that building. It would not be a site. So otherwise, I think I'll just let you ask me questions, if you have any, and I'll do my best to answer them. But again, thank you for seeing us. We're excited to get this one moving.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? If you would, you mentioned bicycle accommodations. I appreciate you including that. Would you mind elaborating on, I know you've got the greenway connection there because we have the multimodal corridor. I know the UDO also speaks to including kind of parking bicycle storage from the multimodal perspective. Can you elaborate on?
Okay, so a couple of things that your UDO brings to us is a bicycle accommodation of one per 25 vehicle spaces. So we have ample room on the property to put six spaces. The parking rates for the vehicle space dictates the parking rate for the bicycle spaces. So what we did is placed an area close to the intersection at Westbrook and Church, just north, and it doesn't appear on this plan, but I'll point to it if you want me to. Just north of the...
If you want, you can use the mouse and...
So in this area here would be fairly secure. We added a concrete slab in an area adjacent to the garbage corral and this parking space here. It doesn't interfere with any of our landscaping. We just moved these shrubs and trees to the north and west slightly. That gives us a secure location attached to the dumpster wall and a place to station bike racks in a concrete slab here. And then on the opposite side of the property, where we may have foot traffic coming from the church or coming from, if you can follow my mouse, coming from Church Street and then up our sidewalk, adjacent to this would be another area of bike storage. And those would be security areas where they could chain the bike to it.
I noticed the slab you mentioned along Westbrook is not in an area...
It's not shown on this plan.
But it's not in an area served by an existing paved sidewalk.
No, we have sidewalks all throughout the interior and the multi-use path where my mouse is now. It's where part of that biking would be. And the grades in that area vertically allow us to move from that path to that area pretty easily.
Okay, so there will be a direct connection.
Yes, it would be. It's a lot easier to accommodate in that location because of the grades.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions from council before we begin the public hearing? All right.
Thank you.
So you will have an opportunity afterwards, if there are any questions, to respond to this. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Council's been provided, first off, any questions from council? After that riveting discussion? All right, council's been provided on their blue sheets with a list of items to consider in a motion to approve or deny this. Do I hear a motion from council?
Well, as stated, I'll sort of go through this a little bit. As stated, this is inconsistent with comprehensive plan, but in accordance with Mike's comments and some of the education that we received last night and the UDO items that were discussed, I'd make a motion that we approve and declare the Comprehensive Land Use Plan modified through this approval. I move that we approve the request with the stated conditions to rezone from O and I Office and Institutional District to CB Conditional Business District. The property is located at 3725 South Church Street, referenced in Alamance County Tax Identification Number 107007. The motion is based upon inconsistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, and that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan, calls for this area to have traditional residential uses. The property is contiguous with commercial zoning, proposed uses properly screened from residential properties that exist in the area. The development incorporates requirements identified in both the Greenways and Bike Ways Plan, map 3.4A, the Comprehensive Network Northwest Burlington, and the pedestrian plan, master plan, map 3.4, Pedestrian Network Recommendation Map, Southwest Grid. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comp plan calls for traditional residential uses, and the proposed use is compatible with the uses in the area. The request is compatible with existing zoning in the area, and developers providing an area for installation, multi-use path to be installed by NCDOT along South Church, and the applicants installing a multi-use path along Westbrook. And it certainly is in the right path to coordinate with our UDO.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you very much for being here.
Appreciate it.
Item three on our public hearings, a public hearing has been set to consider amendments to chapters 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, and 9 of the Unified Development Ordinance. This time, we recognize interim Director of Planning and Community Development, Mike Nun.
Good evening again, Mayor, council. Tonight, we have some amendments to the UDO, which was adopted in November. Since that November date, staff has been working weekly or daily to look through the UDO, to see what necessary amendments were needed to come forward. These amendments are mostly typos, grammar, word, error in word, but we do have some detailed changes that we want to bring to your attention. As you know, it is a very lengthy and detailed document. We do expect more changes to come to you on a quarterly basis. So this is something we will probably be going through in our practice in a future meeting. Staff recommended these approvals to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the November meeting. At their November meeting, they also approved these recommendations unanimously. I want to introduce Mr. Chad Meadows tonight, who spoke with you before, and give his presentation.
Welcome back, Chad.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Very quick tonight, housekeeping measures, so we will just jump right into this. As Mike mentioned, large document, a lot of work, a lot of work by a lot of people. Staff has spent the last few weeks looking over the document. As you recall, it became effective on November 1st of this year. We now have our first round of amendments to the document. The vast majority of these are typo or editorial comments. That said, there are a handful of substantive changes, which I'd like to cover with you guys very, very quickly. Those with keen eyesight and a strong recollection will note that last night I talked about 24 changes, and the slide before you says 25. So I will highlight a late-breaking addition to our hit parade. Again, going through these very, very quickly, I've summarized the substantive changes by chapter. Chapter 2 is the procedures chapter. We have five adjustments here that deal primarily with language on expiration, clarifications about details of master plans, requirements for site plans to be completed as part of conditional rezonings, and notes to be submitted as part of TIA. So some very basic stuff that's in keeping with either what the standard said before adoption or current practice. Chapter 3 is the zoning district chapter. Mostly clarifications to dimensional requirements, and I'd like to call to your attention number four on the list, the MI district. That is the medium industrial district. This is a new district that was added as part of the UDO process. Midway through, we realized that we would like to have a medium-intensity industrial district that accommodates newer, cleaner industries, the kinds of things that are on the scale of a heavy industry district, but don't have the kinds of negative externalities, smoke, odor, glare, noise, et cetera, that are typically associated with heavy industry use. In working through those district provisions, this is the page from the Unified Development Ordinance that deals with the medium industrial district. It's page 3-28, for those of you who have their zoning codes with them. In any case, you'll see for non-residential uses in the medium industrial district, this column includes the litany of dimensional requirements. I'd like to call your attention to the minimum side setback and the minimum rear setback. For the MI district, both of these distances were initially set at 50 feet. Staff has been working on some proposals that are being considered for the MI district. This came to light that these, the side and rear setback for the MI district differ than the other industrial districts. Both the LI district and the HI district have five-foot side yard setbacks and 30-foot rear yard setbacks. None of us can recall why we felt it necessary to include differing setback provisions for MI. And after some careful consideration and discussion, we believe that it makes sense to bring all three industrial districts into parity in terms of their setbacks for side and rear, and would suggest that this change be added to the litany of substantive change we discussed last night. Chapter 4, that's our uses chapter, some adjustments to the range of allowable uses, some adjustments to electronic gaming operations, basically renaming those, and addition of some prior standards in the prior zoning ordinance that were inadvertently left out of the UDO. Chapter 5, this is our development standards chapter, parking landscaping, et cetera. We've made some adjustments to bring things into closer alignment with either current practice, prior standards, or internal consistency with respect to the large format retail use. The standards we're applying relied on a different definition of what large format retail is from the definitions chapter. We're suggesting this change to bring those two into parity. Chapter 8, basically the measurement definitions chapter, a handful of corrections to some illustrations, some clarifications about decks, whether they're at grade or slightly above grade, and then finally, reversion to your prior lot coverage language for the sake of One more adjustment to non-conforming structures, just clarifying that should casualty damage take place, that non-conforming structure would need to be brought into compliance with the UDO if that casualty damage met or exceeded 51% of the structure's assessed value or replacement cost at the time of damage. So again, 25 substantive changes, nothing drastic, pretty much housekeeping stuff. Staff has spent a good deal of time looking at this. We've had several discussions with it. This has been to the planning board, been reviewed, and recommended for approval, with the exception of the medium industrial district, because that was not included in that list. But I'm happy to answer any other questions you have about that or any other items. As Mike mentioned, staff will likely bring another round of this kind of omnibus amendment to you next quarter. You should not anticipate any drastic or cutting edges to any of those changes, again, kind of peripheral things, cleanup, et cetera. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chad. Any questions from council?
I just have one, Chad. How did this, how did, what's the process for this? Did these changes come as a result of working with the document?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So staff, you know, you guys adopted this document back in June, and staff has spent the last five, six months going through projects and looking at both the current Unified Development Ordinance and your prior ordinance, comparing and contrasting, and that's how these kinds of issues have come up. It's sort of like a testing period. It's quite brilliant, actually, and it has, you know, yielded a handful of, I think, very positive changes. So that's where that's come from.
As a matter of fact, I think we all received an email from a business owner that's got a project that they're working on today, and one of the stumbling blocks that was notated in emails cleared up, at least to a large degree, with some of these amendments.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Other questions from council before we begin the public hearing? Thank you, Chad. You'll have an opportunity after the public hearing to respond to any questions. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Council's been provided with a list of recommended wording and arguments for both a approval or denial of this proposal. Do I hear any questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
Okay, I'll read it. I'll make the motion. I'm going to use option one, Mike, right? City council believes this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and move to approve. I move we approve this request to amend chapter 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 9 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed amendments with the comprehensive plan in that Section 4, Land Use Goal 1, Recommendation 5 of the comprehensive plan, calls for an update of the Unified Development Ordinance. Section 4, Land Use Goal 1, Recommendation 5 of the comprehensive plan, calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. Section 4, Land Use Goal 1, Recommendation 5 of the comprehensive plan promotes economic and social benefits, minimizes public costs, and increases the city's tax levy. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that Section 4, Land Use Goal 2, Recommendation 4 of the comprehensive plan, addresses confusion, conflicts, and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new Unified Development Ordinance. Section 4, Land Use Goal 2, Recommendation 4 of the comprehensive plan, a new UDO would be modern, graphically intensive, and user-friendly from both a public, potential, and administrative perspective. Section 4, Land Use Goal 2, Recommendation 4 of the comprehensive plan, that the comprehensive plan process, the community's goals and objectives supplemented by additional public input, will ultimately help the shape of a new UDO.
Thank you, Bob. Do I hear a second to that? Any questions regarding the motion as stated? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate you being here. Thank you, Mike. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We have one item of new business. City council will consider approving a proposed 2020 fees and changes scheduled to be effective January 1, 2020. This time, we recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. You have included in your packet the recommended fee changes, that could be additions, it could be increases or decreases or removal of some fees, and we have the respective departments here, as well as myself, if you have any questions.
Any questions from council regarding the changes and updates to the fee schedule? Do I hear a motion from council to approve the proposed fees and charges?
So moved.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Fee and change schedule has been approved. That concludes our regular business this evening. Next is our public comment period. We had no sign-ups for public comment. Next is our city council comments. Do I hear any city council comments this evening?
I just want to commend the staff for the work that went into the fees and also the planning department and the UDO. This is tedious stuff, and I really appreciate what you've done with that.
To echo Kathy's comments on that subject, seeing the project that has UDO elements in it is really cool to see how it's kind of coming together, even with the project that started before the UDO was even put to the developer's staff to provide this. It's very special.
We're going to have an annual exam to pass them off the charge on the UDO to keep up to date with this.
I'm sure I'll go.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
We need to write something into the UDO to shorten the motions. Just merge those goals and recommendations.
If you want to, I...
Other council comments?
I will share. I want to thank everyone, the council members who ran for office, the community members who stepped up to run in this past election, as well as everybody who came out to vote. We appreciate folks who engage in the public conversation that is an election and the feedback they give to our community. It definitely helps us be better civic leaders. And I did want to bring up a couple of the main conversations that I found myself repeatedly engaged in out in the public.
Obviously, some of these are things that we've talked about already, but just kind of to keep rest of council abreast of some of those conversations. A big one was affordable housing and homelessness. It's something we have started to dig further in thanks to the work of Mayor Portem Hikes, and it's something the community continues to push for council to address and continue to explore opportunities for, again, on affordable housing, and that's the whole spectrum, as well as addressing homelessness in the community and our continued support for allied churches and their work. There was a big question about what we're doing to tear down abandoned houses in the community that are no longer livable. That's something that keeps coming up in front of council, and I think at one point we had heard there were some eighty, some houses in a condemned state within the city, but we've only approved demolition of just a handful of those. The community was requesting kind of further action on those, those abandoned properties in a more proactive approach. And I would, I would challenge staff and, and council to, to really dig in and say, where do we want to be on that? I think with so many properties in a condemned state in the city, it's worth taking heavier action and maybe even challenging ourselves to let's tear down a hundred of those properties in the next year or two, and really show that we're Dr. Malat. Properties like that fester in our community and be a liability for our city overall. Nobody should have to live next to a condemned or abandoned structure like that. As far as transportation, link transit has been a big issue. A lot of folks have talked about that over the previous couple of years. This fall, I heard for the first time a unified voice from riders, from residents, and from business owners and employers asking for Saturday and Sunday service. We've heard kind of multiple requests over the years, but this time it was really focused on the fact that Saturday and Sunday, ridership has very similar needs to what they have Monday through Friday. A lot of folks may work on weekends. Retail and employers are working seven days a week, and they recognize that transportation is an amenity that is needed seven days a week. And so I would encourage us as a council to look at some opportunities to expand that system and meet the needs of our community for Saturday and Sunday with that ridership. And then a big conversation, because we were in the, was about how we hold elections and how our city is represented. That's something that council member Ward has brought up previously in talking about how our council is structured. There was a big question from members of the eastern portion of our city about the lack of representation that they continue to feel that they have on our council. And so I've encouraged us in the coming year to look at opportunities within how we structure our city council and how we structure the way we as council and staff engage with the community. We had a, a great public feedback session in North Park just a couple of weeks ago. It was a very collaborative, hands-on session. I can thank Rachel Kelly and Morgan Laster for helping lead that. And I think that's a great example of how we can do a better job to engage the community year-round, year after year, in helping make decisions that affect our community. Doesn't always have to be in this council chamber, but I would also encourage us to look at how we hold our elections and how our council is structured to make sure that we truly have representation across our community.
You know, in years past, on that particular subject, and I remember David and Harold, we, we've had several meetings out in the community.
Yep.
Harold, those were, it was sort of sporadic with attendance. But that's something that we might need to look at.
Yeah, we have, yeah, well, actually, four or five a year.
Four.
Four, I'd probably say four. Yeah, different, and geographically different, not the same place.
Right.
We left with stormwater, which we heard about last night with the proposed change in how we charge stormwater fees and what that will enable us to do as far as tackling those. Again, I appreciate everyone who engaged in that election. It's a great opportunity to have tough conversations like that that we may not be having as a council already, and to bring that to our attentions so that we can address those needs. So again, just wanted to take that opportunity to share that with the rest of council. Any other council comments this evening?
I think we have some students.
Do we have a couple of students in the audience? Where are y'all from?
Yaloc.
Excellent. Is there a particular course that you're studying or...
We're making the poverty and social justice core capstone.
Fantastic. Well, welcome to city council. If you'd like to stick around and chat with any of us, feel free. All right, any other council comments, or do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you everyone for coming this evening. Council is adjourned.